The York County Council Workshop for April 8th, 2025 to order. The first item is Budget Follow-Up. Do we, do we have some direction, or you want us just to start talking about the budget?
No, we have direction, but we want to hear from you all this evening. So Josh Edwards, County Manager, it's, it's good to stand at this podium every once in a while. So we're hoping to facilitate the conversation this evening. We've got two items on the agenda. One is Budget Follow-Up, and the next one is to talk about the Vision of Economic Development. Obviously, talking about the FY26 budget is an important way to think about how we're planning for the future. Y'all have spent a lot of time already thinking about the FY26 budget and providing feedback. And our Budget Director, Trish Startup, is going to go through this slide and just remind everybody where we're at in the process and what's to come.
All right, good evening, Council. So I just want to talk about where we, what has taken place since the last time we had our last workshop and where we're headed. So since the last workshop, we had the Budget Retreat in March, the 21st and the 22nd. And during the retreat, as you can see, we went over the revenue projections, we talked about capital projects, and we also talked about the budget opportunities and challenges for the FY26 budget. I want to thank you all for your time those two days and the feedback that you put into the budget. It was very helpful as we were concluding the budget process and beginning to create the FY26 budget. So thank you for your time and dedication on those two days. Next up, tonight, we are going to do a budget review on a couple items, some follow-up from the retreat, and then some budget opportunities and discussion. Next time at the Budget Workshop on May 5th, excuse me, let me go back. So April 21st, you will hear from the County Manager. This is the first time he will present the budget to you all. Last time, last year, we had heard that you all would like to have received that earlier, so you had more time to review it before the first reading. So we're gonna, the manager's going to present that on the 21st. And then on May 5th, we'll have the first reading of the budget. And then May 13th will be the public hearing of the budget. And right after that will be the Council Workshop. And at the Council Workshop is when outside agencies who have requested funding will come to present you, come and present their requests to you if applicable. And that is where we are right now in the budget process and where we are headed. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
All right, Cheryl, I know you were here last night till, till late at night doing hard work, and we appreciate that. So we want to respect y'all's time tonight. So we're going to try to keep our, our portion of the Budget Follow-Up items to under 30 minutes. And then Mitch is going to try to keep his section to 30 minutes to make sure we get a lot of good work done in an hour. But we want to have good dialogue. Also, I want to thank you, this is my one-year anniversary, so it's been a great first year with y'all, and I look forward to the next one. But April 8th is the first day I started, and so we've done a lot this year, and I'm very thankful for the relationship and y'all's commitment to making York County an even better place. At the retreat we had, as Trish mentioned, there were a number of follow-ups, and we wanted to start there, just giving you all more information about the research we've done and what we've learned since then. I'm going to first hand to our Assistant Manager of Public Safety related to the 911 consultant conversation. You can share.
Yeah, so Council, we have included in the County Manager's Office Budget a Budget Line Item for Procuring the Consultant. So I've developed that RFP and am vetting that through our PSC Communications folks right now. So we've included the cost for the consultant in next year's budget, and we'll have that RFP ready to submit as soon as the budget is approved and begins in July.
And as Kevin passes that out, just for those watching at home, I'll give some context. In this year's budget, we're going to have a fee schedule that shows all the fees in the county. This is important, so our residents and businesses know what to expect. So we intend to have that attached as we bring forward the budget. Kevin's going to talk a little bit about our CFO and Assistant Manager, Kevin Matt, is going to talk a little bit about the landfill tipping fees and how those might change.
Good evening, Council. We are handling the landfill tipping fees just as we have in the past. We don't try to, I'm going to say maximize the profit in that fund. We want to make sure that fund can stand alone and support itself. And so that's the reason for the increase. But as you see in the chart that I handed out, we are very much below the market price. But again, our goal is not to try to maximize the amount we're collecting in tipping fees and transferring it somewhere else. We just try to make sure that fund can sustain itself, so the fees were adjusted accordingly. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now. Or any more detailed questions, I can pass you along to Eric Quirk later. Just want to give you that information. Thank you, Council.
All right, then the other two items in terms of follow-up that we heard at the retreat, y'all are interested in receiving more information via maps. As I introduced David earlier, Dave Gardner, our Assistant Manager of Public Safety, is going to share a little bit about the maps and where we're at. And Tom Couch, our Assistant Manager of Development Services, will follow that up. We are working on pulling those together, but we wanted to give you an update.
So, two layers of that. Our water and sewer maps, we actually have those maps existing. They're password-protected, they're behind a protected wall because they do display critical infrastructure. So what we'd like to do is work with Council to find out what information that you need, rather than giving, since it is restricted access. And our staff can work with you to help give you the information, or we can have that information provided to you. So kind of working with you to find out what information you request of us, and then we can kind of tailor that to you, because it's, it's a lot contained in that one map. But we do have them, and they are available, they're just password-protected. The other side of that is our roads map, so we're working to develop that. We do have, obviously, as you've seen, a good paved map that shows DOT and county-owned roads. So we're working to layer in and add a gravel roads map, and we'll break that down by district. I believe you're also interested in possibly how those roads, the quality, the grades of the roads. So we may include that as part of that layer. So the paved roads exist, but we're working to add the gravel roads. And we have a deadline for that of the coming weeks, but we'll provide that to you. That'll be a link that we can share with you, that won't be one that's password-protected, because that should be publicly available. So as soon as we have that, we'll share that with Council. But let you know, we are working on those. Again, water and sewer, we have, just want to work with you to understand what you need and how we can serve you with that. And then the roads, we'll provide that as soon as that's completed.
And just to enhance what David said, by the way, good evening, Council. We, we do have some statistical data that we can depict in, in those maps. There are 528 miles of county-maintained paved roads that you, in all likelihood, saw illustrated in the retreat. But there's also 207 miles of gravel roads. And I think we, we'd like to see if we can get an additional annotation on that map on which roads we actually possess right-of-way on, and which roads are prescriptive easement, basically private property or an easement with private property that comes to the center line. So we hope we, we can bring you that kind of detail as well, and that it will be useful to you.
Good question. In this roads overlay, is it possible to integrate? So say if we have it on Pennies for Progress, you know, you know, Pennies for Progress, or say it's a state road, and they have it up for pavement. And is it possible to integrate information to say, when we look at it, we click on the road, we can see it's coming up, we've actually put C-funds down on it, or it's a state road and the state estimates that it will be paved in a year, something like that? You know, as much information we can find when we look and drill in, something along those lines?
Certainly, I think, you know, a, a interactive map with a relational database can, can be created. And we hope we could not only make it council-friendly, but citizen-friendly as well. But when you want that level of detail in a GIS map, know that it takes a little bit of time to, to develop. But if you want that kind of detail, it's certainly achievable.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
And we do, just to follow up one other thing, we do have some of those maps already available, specifically for Pennies for Progress and some of our capital improvement. So we will work to integrate and layer those into an overall map that would just be largely roads in general. So some of that already exists, but now we'll marry all that information together to provide that in one map.
That's awesome. We get people asking us, you know, when, when roads are going to be down and etcetera, and if we had that integrated, it'd make it very seamless. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, that concludes the follow-up from the retreat. Every time we've talked in terms of the last few workshops in the last few months, I've printed you all the Budget Development Guidelines. And I emailed that to you after the retreat, because I printed it for the retreat as well. I didn't print it for you this time, because I've given you three copies. And I, that's, that, I think I've got a, I've reached my limit with the number of paper items I've given you. So you have the latest document, you haven't changed it. But what I want to point your attention to on the screen is what's been on the last page throughout. It's now page 10 of 10. But these are the four items that have been out there that we've been working on as a council, with staff, and having conversations. These are the, those outlining things that we need to, to finish up. We had a great discussion at the retreat related to the future capital projects. I think we received y'all's feedbacks. We don't need to talk about that tonight, but I wanted to include it on the screen, because it has been at the end of our budget guidelines this whole time. However, we have received feedback from some of you all that you'd like to discuss the Economic Development Fund a little bit more, specifically the funding source that we've, we've outlined for the Ag facility. Kevin's going to give you a few updates related to that.
Good news on that, Council. I talked with York One School District, they've been holding the funds, and they were able to allocate the interest income that those dollars the state has given them, as well as some additional donated funds. So the shortfall is now 800,000 instead of 880. Ms. Hagner also passed along that they've been working with the new hotel coming in York to plan events and coordinate with them, as well as some other businesses in downtown York. So a good economic development project. And I'm also passing out, and this is the same information you got through retreat, the economic development study that was done by Mitch's group. But very happy report that the funding need for that facility has gone down. Thank you all.
So at this time, you know, if there's feedback and conversation related to utilizing the ED Fund for the Ag facility, we want to entertain that conversation, give you all the time for conversation.
I'll interject real quickly. As the Chair of the ED Committee, I would like to ask Council to consider not funding that allocation, assuming it passes, not funding that from the ED Fund. And we'll cover that in more detail tonight on what we feel like we should be investing the money in through the ED Fund, and we pay that money out of account 1420.
Yeah, I think, again, I think that was a very, very good discussion we had at the Economic Development Fund. And I think the list of items that we came out of there with are very strong. I think there's an opportunity to do something big, whether it's a partner, co-partnership, public-private, whatever it may be. I think there's an opportunity. I think because of that, I think I'm, I'm inclined to support the funding for the Ag to be outside of the ED Fund, myself also. So again, because of that opportunity.
Thank you.
Where are we going to get the money?
So one of the things-
Where are you recommending?
Right, so obviously, staff, we will, we will assess where it makes the most sense to come out of. I do think our capital fund, our general capital fund, is a potential source for that. So Councilmember Huckabee mentioned 1420, that's what 1420 is, our capital fund. But we can share other potential sources, if y'all want, of what we might utilize for that 800,000 dollars. I think what's important is we're committed to funding the Ag facility and being a partner. And staff, we can identify where that makes the most sense to come out of, if not the ED Fund. And include it in our recommended.
Well, just one last thing, I think it was great that the schools all stepped up and did a sum of amount of money that they put towards the cost. I think that's, that's very good. But do we want to bring up the items, though, that we came up with in economic development that kind of opened it up a little bit?
So what I would say is, let's save that conversation for Mitch's portion of the agenda.
Oh, okay.
He's ready to facilitate a robust conversation about the ED Fund. I just wanted to make sure that, since this was budget-related, we handled the budget side of it here. But you can also bring it back up later in the evening, or should I say later in the hour, when we talk about the vision.
I'll just say, and part of the discussion in the Economic Development Committee meeting, and I felt... So, so at the retreat, I, I expressed that I would support the funding coming from a different source other than the Economic Development Fund source. That seemed to be, to be out, I seem to be outnumbered, even though I claimed another person to, to address that as well. So when we had the Economic Development Committee meeting, I made sure, I wanted to make sure that folks didn't think that there was some change of position on that or some, some, some attempt to try and change the position of council. So I think this, this would be the opportunity for, for other council members if they feel strongly about where those funds need to come from for that piece of, of... That now's the time to do it, instead of trying to go... When I got the feedback from, from what happened at, at the retreat, that's, that was important to me to make sure that we have this conversation here today, so if there's objection to that.
Well, my main thing, I just want to know, how do you think it's not economic development in investing this in our youth? Are, are you thinking that even though these may be lower-paying jobs, that they're not economic development? I mean, I mean, that don't make no common sense.
So the que, the question-
You're, you're trying to say, this is economic development, this ain't. And if Ag in the future, young people in Ag have no part in our economic development, then the, the grocery store don't either, because it's got to get there somehow. I, I mean, I mean, that just doesn't, I mean, it, I mean, it, y'all, y'all can take it however you want, no?
I guess, I want, I want to make sure that I'm clear. Are, is there a different source that this can come from where it doesn't create an issue other than the ED Fund source? I'd at least like clarification on that.
Yes, I believe so, and I think that's the capital fund, where we do have some flexibility. I, I think in answer to Councilmember Atkins' question, I think what the ED Committee wrestled with the other night, and what we'll talk more about, is what are the priorities of that funding? The funding is limited, and there's specific things the ED Committee is interested in. I don't think anybody's saying that this isn't economic development and this isn't workforce development. I really do believe this is a great workforce development project, and the youth of our county will benefit greatly from this project. But I don't think anybody's saying that's not the case. I think the question is, is with a finite source of funding that the ED Committee is currently trying to put on paper what we should use it for, where they're going is potentially not something that would incorporate a, a project like this. But that doesn't make this project any less important. So I think what we're trying to figure out is how do we do both? That's how I interpret the conversation.
Well said.
Yeah, I think that was well said. I, I, I think what this is, I think this is economic development opportunity. But I think the larger projects that we talked about, there's going to be a needed sum of funds that we need to make sure we're not draining down, so we can get the funds from another source, as Josh was saying, so.
And what's our total, what will be our total investment into this if we went all the way with it?
Kevin just shared, it was, it's about 800,000 dollars right now, is the delta that they need.
So I, so, just so I'm clear, I mean, it's, I'm not hearing any objection to the funds coming from, from either place. I think the, the question is, how's it going to appear on the first reading of the budget? And, and I know y'all made a recommendation. I've, I've heard Mr. Huckabee, and, and I've, I've already, already made my position known. And Tom has suggested that he's okay with it coming from a different fund, I assume. Let me hear from the rest of y'all. I think we need to kind of nail that down for what's going to be first on, at least how it's going to appear on the agenda.
I'm okay with funding, I mean, I want to fund it, you know, I don't have a preference for where it comes from. If economic development funds being allocated and kind of a special fund applies to other things, and we can use those funds to get additional funds, you know, I don't mind separating it out and having this come out of whatever other fund source y'all come up with. The only thing that I really am looking for is, is that we get it funded. You know, the actual funding source doesn't matter quite as much. I know y'all are going to pick the, the best one for the county.
So if not from economic, ED funds, where would it come from?
Well, and, and that's what we were discussing. I think the, the capital fund, which we sometimes call the 1420 fund, but it really is our, our general capital fund. All right, anything else on that item?
I agree, I think it probably could come from either one, but I'm happy for it to, if that makes Council happy, we'll...
Okay, and, and y'all will have more discussions about the work of the ED Committee later in the evening, for an hour. And hopefully, there'll be some understanding of what the ED Committee's thinking in terms of, of that fund, and how it can be... The, the one last-
I just want, I just want it to get done.
Completely agree.
And, and so if, if it's coming from the general, I mean, whatever, special budget, whatever-
Capital fund.
Capital, is that pretty fast? Like a check tomorrow?
As of July 1st, they'll both be fast, yes.
What do you think, Tommy?
Well, I just want it to get done, but, I mean, I... This, though, Ag is always overlooked. And it's the most important of anything we do.
I don't know about that.
Park, park and...
When you eat, it is.
Ag is not the most important thing York County Council does. It's not.
Well, I ain't saying York County, but I'm saying for general, you know?
Yeah, okay.
But, but, well, that, that, that's fine. I mean, any, any way that it, it can get done, it can get done. But I just don't like the intentions of us not thinking that it's not a vital economical part of our county or any other county. I mean, you know, that, that, that's why right now Australia and Brazil are number one in beef production. That's why right now our dairy production per US is only 20,000 dairies left. And people can drink the fake milk and have their fake meat, if that's the way our society wants to go. But it was the beginning and the first job that man had, and, and it ultimately had to be the last.
Well, there, there's one other item that, that we've been discussing this whole time as we've talked through the Budget Development Guidelines and the HEP Committee has discussed. So last night, you received the HEP Committee's recommendations related to their work around the Parks Master Plan to date. And so, as y'all remember, the Parks Master Plan consultant came from Clemson and presented their findings to y'all in a workshop. They really thought about this in terms of three phases. One was, what is the immediate need of our current parks? And y'all funded that in this current budget, the FY25 budget. That was through a, a budget, agenda item that came to y'all mid-year this year that y'all approved in January. So that, y'all designated funds in the FY25 budget, and then we brought those positions that were needed this current year to y'all in January. Y'all approved it. That was the first step of the Parks Master Plan, take care of the operations of the current parks. The second part was to begin to discuss how we fund current and future parks' capital and operating, operating costs. And so it's important, as we think about the multiple parks, we've created a new department recently, the Parks Department. We've created the Utilities Department. We are standing up some very new departments. We need to make sure we're funding those departments to achieve the level of service we're asking. So as our Parks Department has grown, as the land we have has been considered for development into new parks, Catapa Bend, and now potentially Wood End, it's very important for us to think about how we fund those soon-to-be parks and future capital projects. So that, one of the things the consultant outlined was a need to identify capital funding for parks into the future. That was one of the big things. They also outlined studying the rec tax and understanding how the rec tax has implications for our inability to fund our operations. And so the committee has met multiple times, and as you heard last night, the recommendations are on the screen. The first recommendation was to dissolve the unincorporated tax. And so for, for the county, and as we've- And so, for, for the county, and as we've discussed this as staff, and Tom, jump in as you want, as we've discussed this as staff, for us, we're, we need to be focused on funding county parks. And it's been very clear from, from County Council that you want us focused on passive parks. And so, how do we build and, and, and operate these passive parks? What we're recommending and what came out of the committee was a countywide tax of, of one point five mils. So this is a general fund millage, this would be added to the general fund millage, this would be utilized to make sure we can run our parks currently and into the future on the operating side, but also begin to set aside funds for capital projects. We talked about some of those capital projects at the retreat that are front and center currently, that we need to, need to complete. And there are other projects into the future that if we don't start setting aside funds, we will not be able to afford. And that was clear guidance from the consultant. The, the other piece to this is, okay, what's our opportunity, and this is what the committee asked, to gradually, not just one year, say, okay municipalities, we're no longer going to provide the unincorporated tax, but what's a way to gradually help them move away from that? There was a couple ideas that were floated by the committee. One was a stipend, another was a, a, another financial opportunity like a scholarship. There was a couple ideas, but where the committee landed was, hey, it would be great if we could do something that was capital-based, we could work with some of our future parks' capital funding, and that one point five mils, and dedicate some of that capital funding to some of the municipal parks' capital projects. We think that would be a great opportunity to support the municipalities, and we could find common approaches to their projects. However, if, if municipalities aren't interested in that, potentially a stipend could be considered. So the committee talked that, about that back and forth, some numbers were thrown out. And where we are as staff now is, we're asking the municipalities to provide the, the current registrations they're receiving from unincorporated residents. They've already provided a general report that we shared with all of y'all, and if we were to take that general report, and let's just say we were looking at youth recreation, there's about ten thousand or so registrants based on those reports. And so, if, if those numbers are, are truly what are, are, are all truly unincorporated residents, which we know they're not, except, because some of them say non-city registrants, they could be from other counties, or they could be from other states, because we're a border county. But just say all ten thousand were unincorporated residents, we would look at what the average fee is that they're charging, and that's, seems to be around fifty and seventy dollars, some municipalities it's between seventy and a hundred. And we would say, we're going to give you a credit for every unincorporated resident that participates, based on that average fee. So once they provide that data, we'll say, okay, well, if you've got a, a, a number of registrants, we'll, we'll take that average and we'll provide that fee. So if you think about ten thousand registrants, between fifty and seventy dollars per, that's a general estimate of what that might cost us, that gets you to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in general, we think a portion of, of that one point five mil, at least for this next fiscal year, could be utilized as a stipend, but we would prefer moving towards a capital program where we can share on costs like lights at fields, playgrounds, and other things that some municipalities might not be able to afford, but we can help them afford.
I think the county manager was very, very fluent in that description, but I'll just add very briefly that I think the council can also take comfort in the fact that if you look at what we're trying to do in, in terms of level of service or service model, or if you take an approach from either public economics or, or finance, what we're really trying to do is bring an equitable solution to pay, not only for our differentiated service model, but we have no intention of trying to leave the municipalities or LWAA high and dry. I, I think the unincorporated tax worked very well in its origin, but obviously York County has changed, you all have seen it more than I have, and now I, I think we're, we're in a place where this makes sense, it's feasible and, and defensible, and I, I, I think the good news is, is we're talking with the municipalities, we're having, you know, conversation, and we're, we're trying to relieve any anxiety that they have. So, you know, I, I would just say, we hope you, you would take comfort in knowing that.
So, do we want to wrap the discussion?
What, I mean, what exactly is it that you need for the budget?
Well, I think-
This is the budget workshop, what, what do you need for us to decide in order to help you get to the first reading of the budget?
Well, I think, I think what I'm trying to do is provide an update from the committee, and for y'all to see that there are some budget implications in both of these items. So, for example, the one at the very bottom, the committee asked that, you know, in their recommendation, that we dedicate the remaining funds in Bethel Lake Wiley to building out Woodend. So there's about three million dollars. So that's a budget item. So in my recommended budget, you'll see a set aside for what we think we can accomplish next year in Woodend, and then after that, we'll work to spend the remaining amount with the Bethel Lake Wiley Advisory Committee informing us on how best to do that for Woodend. That's a budget item. So, I just wanted to give y'all a heads up, that in terms of the recommendation, I plan on including that in my recommended budget, unless I hear otherwise. In terms of the above, I do think there's a lot more moving pieces that I, if you want to provide feedback tonight, that would be helpful, because I can build that into my recommended budget, where this can be a standalone item that flows throughout the process. But the problem is, this, this truly does impact our budget, how we're going to fund our operations.
I'll come, first of all, I want to say this to the, to the committee, and obviously this is something that we can negotiate in more extent, in the title-only piece when it comes before the council, but if, if what we're trying to do is to decide today here, should we, should we, for purposes of today, you know, give the go-ahead for management to budget the one and a half mils countywide to deal with our park system, I support that, mostly because in the retreat, what, what we learned was that, and, and one of the things that's important to me is that we have to be cognizant and be careful of, of the financial ramifications to the county. And from my understanding, after talking with and hearing from management, as well as from Mr. Madden, is that this one and a half mils is supported by, is supported by them, and that this combined with the H-tax funding would allow the county to provide its, to support the parks that we currently have in existence without having to do anything else. And I think that's, that's important, is making sure that you cap that responsibility. My understanding is, is that that one and a half mils could potentially build into it, and it, it's, it's not an easy task, because we're already getting calls from folks thinking that we're cutting all these things and all of these programs for folks, so I do appreciate the committee taking this on. It is always a difficult thing, and it's something that we've had to tackle for many years, and so, it, it all, it comes with its, its, it, it's political justifications. I, I'll give, as someone who's lived this for a very long time, and I know several on this council have too, and I'm not saying that we don't have to, to massage this to, to a place where it makes folks feel comfortable, but to me, the way I view it is, we are so blessed in this county to have the amenities, have these amenities countywide. I think the main thing that we're trying to do, and we went and talked to all the mayors, is make sure, how do we complement things? How do we work together? We're providing passive, you guys are providing existing parks, but you're doing primarily, you know, organized sports. Certainly, you have to charge, and most, if not all of these folks, charge a, a fee to, for the organized sports. That fee is paid by the incorporated people, that fee is also paid by the unincorporated people. The whole purpose of this, this fund was to make sure that the, the folks in the unincorporated area weren't charged twice as much to do, to participate in sports, because there wasn't the ability to, to do any recreation absent these, these offerings. And so, I'm very thankful to our municipalities who have provided this service, and, and this is something that, that I think that we need to, to work cooperatively and figure out how to, how to best fund these. I fully support, other than Field Day Park, the county's role, as I see it, is passive, and I think that we should keep it passive. I think it's, it's a compliment to the municipalities, I don't think we need to get into an area to compete with that. And I think the municipalities should feel free to charge, if, if, if it costs a certain amount to, to let kids play baseball, I think they should charge that amount, and that should be what, what it is. I am, I think it's important for us to set up a, a fee, a, a, a portion of that, that funding, to allow the community to apply directly and say, if, if the cities decide they've got to charge more, then they can apply to the county and say, here's the difference, and, and this is how, you know, provide that offset. I guess fundamentally, I think that, that each entity, I think what we're trying to get to is, how do, how do we be transparent and, and accountable, and not create duplicative things? So I think that the easiest way to do that, and I've gone through and looked at the cappers of all the municipalities of where they get their funding, from H-tax, from ATAX, from the fees that they charge, but I guess what I'm hearing management say, and I think that the committee, which I fundamentally think makes sense, is that each of the entities should be responsible for building their parks, maintaining their parks, and if there, there's anything that's a user fee, then we, that's, that's where there's this question here, is should that, a lot of folks in the unincorporated areas don't participate in the organized sports, but the parks themselves do provide, they increase their property values, they, they are accessible to everyone, I hope that that remains that way. It does trouble me when I hear municipalities say, we're not going to offer this at all now, or we're going to start charging two or three times that. That, to me, is, is troubling to me, but I think if we can really grab down and get down to the bottom of what the cost actually is, and how do we, how do we complement each other and create a community that, that we all, that allows the parks throughout the county, then I think I'm supportive of that. And I, and I'm not pretending that we're going to be able to hammer through all the issues today, but, but if what I'm hearing management say is, the one and a half mils countywide would allow us to like, that's going to be it, and that's going to fund us through twenty thirty-three, when the H-tax becomes fully available, that makes sense to me. I think trying to build in a, a, a fund that allows that, and then, you know, help, you know, transition out to, to give our municipalities some help, and there are areas that, this is the only, this is the only recreation that exists, so I think this gives some flexibility to that.
Yeah, so, just to piggyback off your comments, first of all, with that one point five mil, I know, again, last year, we had a three mil decrease in, in taxes overall, I think there was three mils, right Kevin?
From where?
Approximately three mils. So, I think there was, you know, probably hindsight at the time that, you know, maybe they should have, maybe partial of funds should have gone towards the county parks, but I think this is an opportunity, again, over two years, still showing one point five roughly decrease over the last two years. I think that's a, you know, it's a good, good, it's a good story for the public, because they, they know now they're going to end up getting the funding for quality parks. But I'm going to, like, play my record again here, and this is my concern about the municipalities, okay, in the, in what's going on in regards to this. Nothing's changed. I mean, we're, we are not in, other than Field Day Park, we are not in organized sports, we're not building fields, right? So, we've got municipalities that have gone out, they've promoted this, they've, they've integrated this into the public where kids can take advantage of this opportunity. We're not there, out there replacing. And this is the big concern I have with this, overall, because we're pulling back something that all of a sudden says, well, we need to, we need to restructure this or push it in some other areas where they need it directly for operating expenditures, okay? I think that when we look at a stipend process, I think there's a lot of bureaucracy to it, in identifying, is that stipend we're sending actually going, going to go to where we sent the money for, is it going towards that? I think there's layers of bureaucracy in this ideation of capital funding and, and stipend that I think is, to me, the real need is, is operating expenditures for these municipalities. I think that, again, I don't think anything's changed, I think we should continue to fund their operating expenditures, at the same time, we have an opportunity now to support our parks. Again, that's where I stand. I would not even want to consider anything this year, because I think, I don't want to have this thing pushed upon them, because I, I'm sure that they're anticipating funding in their next, in their budget, based on what we do. Again, I would rather carry on what we're doing now, and then move forward, and hopefully carry on continually to support them from an operating expenditure with our funds. That's where I stand on it.
Let me, I'll say this. You helped make my point, or make council's point, this is not what those funds are for, to fund operations. The money is to offset the cost of what it would take to participate. If they want to try to bake something in for, to fund the operation, fine, but this is not what the rec funding is for. Exactly what you said, it is not for that. We're not here to fund their operations for their park. This money goes into a pot, goes into a fund, it's supposed to go to them to, to keep the costs, make it cost neutral, instead of increasing the cost on county residents. This was never set up to help fund their operations.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and to say, we don't want to cut it off now, we've been working on this for several years, they've known some changes were going to come, and we're not completely cutting them off. I think with the, the stipend or scholarship fund, and I think Josh made it very clear that, hey, if, if they send us a, a number of participants that they've had that were in, unincorporated, we would send them those funds, purely what the fund was intended for. They still would get that money based on what the ordinance was originally put in to do. So we're not cutting them off, we're saying, we're going to hold you accountable for you to get us the real data, so that we can apply the money appropriately, and at the same time, still have some money set aside to help some of the smaller areas with some of their capital needs. We're not going to, you know, it's not a cutoff situation, it's a make it more efficient situation.
Well, just one, one quick comment. When I say operating cost, I'm stating the fact that they're applying this in, to enable to keep the cost low for unincorporated kids. That's why I'm saying the money is used for, it's offsetting the difference in the operating cost, so these kids can play sports at a lower cost. That's why I meant by operating, so.
All right, I'll go ahead and go next, I guess. All right, so, out of committee, it was a two to one vote, I dissented, I did not agree with the recommendation, so let me share why. So, in York County, we have three hundred thousand citizens. To keep math simple, there's a hundred and fifty thousand citizens in the incorporated area, there are a hundred and fifty thousand citizens in the unincorporated area. When you look at the data provided by the Municipal Association, and we can argue that it's, it's off one percent, five percent, ten percent of the way, but virtually every municipal association is sharing with us, that has been shared with all of us on council, that over fifty percent of the utilization of their active sports come from the unincorporated citizens of the county. So, this is just the way my mind thinks. So, last year, the four main municipalities, Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Tigukay, New York, Clover was left out of that, no, Clover's in this as well, Clover, one point two million dollars was allocated to those five municipalities, to provide active recreation to any citizen, adult, or child in the unincorporated areas of York County that want to utilize those services. And it's been shared with us, and we can argue that the, the numbers they gave us are too high, they may say they're not, but regardless, we have a lot of citizens utilizing the services of the municipalities, and I've been giving specific examples, and I'll get into a little bit of that in just one second. So, one point two million to five municipalities, but if you look at Field Day Park, which is the only active sports recreation that this county is involved with, or in the county, it's something that's funded, there is about one point two million dollars, I learned from the last meeting, that I think we have two staff members that are connected to Field Day Park. But anyway, there's one point two million dollars of operational expense for Field Day Park, and there's about one point two million dollars, okay, let's go with- And there's about 1.2 million dollars, okay, let's go with a million then. We'll go with a million. More than two? Okay. But either way, let's just say it's a million dollars of operational expense for Field Day Park. And there's 1.2 million dollars that we're paying, not we, the citizens over there are paying on their debt. That's 2.2 million dollars to run Field Day Park. That's one park in the county. I just mentioned, there's five areas of the county municipalities we provide 1.2 million dollars to for active recreation for our citizens. And it was shared earlier, and I would think this council would agree, or future councils might agree, that we don't want to get involved in active recreation. We want to stay in passive recreation. So then we say, okay, what are our options? Could we have a countywide tax? I too am in favor of a countywide tax. I too am in favor of keeping the 1.5 unincorporated tax. Why? That's $23.38 a year per person in the unincorporated area of the county. That's what 1.5 mils is. $23.38. So I think we should keep the 1.5 for the unincorporated, as Tom said. And I think we should adopt the 1.5 for the entire county. Other thing is, we said that we, we may invest in, if you read on the page here, it says we may invest in the capital projects. So I took the initiative to reach out and ask across those five areas, excluding Lake Wiley, across those five areas, Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Tegucay, Clover, and York, what kind of capital projects do they have on their plates? Cumulatively, there's 115 million dollars of capital projects in their current and future expectation of budgets. 115 million. Now, we're investing 1.2 million dollars a year right now. So if we're gonna invest in a capital project, we're, we're gonna have to put a cap on it because they've got 115 million of need supposedly, right? Again, I think 1.2 is a bargain. Then we say, we're going to put a stipend in place to reimburse. There's administrative expenses to that. We're thinking about how that works from our perspective, but we don't know how the municipalities are gonna react because we, we, we're given options. There were four options we were given to come up with this one. But what we don't know is, of the five municipalities, one might say, you know, we just, York is an example. York's budget's a million dollars, okay, for parks and rec. And 20% comes from this budget. 200,000 dollars comes from what we give them. So that's a pretty big hit for them. York might say, we just can't, we can't afford to take care of the unincorporated citizens of York County. So we just can't, we can't do it. And somebody else might say that. And somebody else might say, well, we're just gonna charge a whatever, 25, 50, 70, 500 dollar differential for the unincorporated areas. But here's what I, here's what I've thought through. If the municipalities have a tax for recreation, then to provide active recreation, doesn't it make sense for us to have a tax for active recreation that we're not having to provide? We're getting it a crazy discount. And it's only costing $23.38 a year. So I have to agree with Councilman Aldette that I think we ought to take a very close look at this. I think, um, I think it would be great for our administration to work with the municipalities to figure out what the appropriate split is of 1.2 million dollars and then figure out how we should handle Lake Wiley moving forward. But I think the issue has been since I've been on council, how do you, what's, what's the process of determining who should get what in a dollar amount? That's been the real rub of the issue. I know it shifted lately about, um, you know, providing the 1.2 million or 1.6 including Lake Wiley. But anyway, uh, that's my two cents worth. I, I would, I would like the same thing you said. 1.5 mils for the entire county and leave the 1.5 for the unincorporated because it's only $23.38 and it accomplishes what we're doing at a crazy ridiculous discount. If one of those municipalities forced us into providing an active recreation in an area, this would have been a poor decision.
Is that for person or household?
That is $23.38.
I, I've got, I've got to comment here because I've spent a lot of time, I've spent a lot of time looking at the cappers on how this works. And I think if, if, if what we're seeing, for instance, like the city of Rock Hill, it says that they, they provide their, use their H-tax and their A-tax, um, as well as, I mean, profits on water and sewer, the, the, the unincorporated folks are contributing to all of the municipalities as well as administrative fees. So you brought up one with York, and I'll just say, I looked at their budget and I've asked that, that we take a look at this and that we just drill down. I think the main point that we're hearing is, we all support our parks. We want to make sure that everybody is thriving and that folks have access to it. I think the question is, we gotta make sure that we're transparent in the funding, that we aren't funding operational of one because you can't track that. But I mean, like, if we just take one of them, I think a million dollar budget with, with, but when you take into consideration that nearly the entire amount is covered by H-tax and A-tax and miscellaneous revenue, and there's not a charge for the, uh, folks that participate in the active recreation. I think if you go through this with all of them, I think that's where we're trying to end up is to make sure, this idea that, that they're not participating, I don't think is correct because the unincorporated folks are paying towards the H-tax, they're paying towards the A-tax, they're paying these fees that everybody has to pay. And I, I really think the issue is, how do we capture what is that fee piece? And it not be that we're subsidizing the recreation fund? That's something that we all need to do because we're now coming to the table to offer amenities for, for, actually, we've been offering them for years and we've not been charging anyone. The only people that have been charged is the unincorporated folks giving it to the municipality. So, um, I, I would, I would say, I think that there's a little bit more information to gather to draw the conclusion. Um, that, that that's been made. I personally support the one and a half mil countywide tax and I don't support both. I think that, for instance, the folks in Lake Wiley, especially the one place where we're doing the, the, um, the, uh, they're having to pay more in Field Day Park. When you're doing that, that sort of programming, I think there is an expectation that there's an additional cost for that that's paid for through the municipalities and, and they are. So to do that would be triple of what they're currently at. And I would like to see us consolidate it and, and let's make sure that all of our county parks are operating together and it not be three different fees, the, these all different ways. And I think that gives us the ability to do that.
Well, I, I don't think, I want to get into double taxing, the unincorporated tax and the rec tax. I, I mean, the, the countywide tax. I, I don't think that's the right way to go. County residents do pay into, in certain, in certain municipalities, certain, certain areas, county residents do pay into the city coffers because they charge double on water. They charge double on sewer. They don't have a problem charging those rates on basic needs. But yet and still they're saying, oh, we hate to charge double for little Johnny to come play baseball. But you're charging his mom and dad twice the amount for water and sewer. They're, they're, you, they're not afraid to do that, but they see a big money grab. And this, this is part of trying to cut down on us being looked at as just deep pockets and just reach your hand in and grab as much as you can and take out. There should be some accountability as to where this money's going and what it's used for. If they built, if each municipality built five more parks, what does that do? That increases their operational cost. And what are they gonna say? Well, we need more money to help fund our operations. Well, let's put our hand back in the bag. We don't, we don't control how many parks they build. We don't control their operational costs. The rec funding is just to pay to offset the cost of little Johnny who lives in the county to participate in whatever program they have. And if, if we're looking at this in any kind of way different, then I think we're looking at it wrong. Let's just get back to the basics. We, we, we're getting way away from what things were established to do.
So, but the basic, the basics are here is that this is how they're offsetting the cost for them. Building more parks. You know, I mean, if, if they, I mean, we're not, I mean, we're not going into the rec business. The cost is, as Watts was saying, the cost of us going into the rec business would, would, it would be astronomical. And I think that we, we are very lucky to have such programs in these municipalities and have an ability to lower the cost for these kids that are in the unincorporated. We've got a perfect thing. We're not raising that millage rate from 1.5 higher for them. It's, it would stay the same. But I think this is a critical component for our county. And we, we have got this beautiful opportunity where we don't have to go into the rec business. It's already been set and we're helping to lower the cost for the kids to use it by doing this program.
So I want to make sure we have time for the second agenda item tonight, but, and also we hear from everyone. So I know there's three of y'all that haven't shared, so I want to make sure.
I mean, obviously, uh, everybody knows how I feel about this, but let me just add little, a few points there. The countywide tax of 1.5 mils, you know, the intent was 1.5 mils today, but that wouldn't be a set in stone price forever. If we needed to raise that at, at some future point or today, then, you know, we should do that. We're just offsetting or just carrying across what we were already, uh, putting on the incorporate, unincorporated areas. You know, you mentioned kind of a, a phase out on the, on the stipend or the capital needs. And I, I think this is a, a permanent, uh, whatever funding mechanism that we come up with for the municipalities. I think this is what's gonna go through forever. Of course, there'll be tweaks to it, but I don't think this is a, a short-term funding source or just a couple-year funding source for this. My intentions was this to be, uh, going forward because you're right. The, this is a, what the municipalities provide is very important to the unincorporated residents. The problem I have with it is, is there's, in my opinion, no accountability or transparency in that fund. That money is divided with a very simple arbitrary number and handed out. You know, I think it absolutely needs to be done on a per-person basis, uh, which is why I believe in the stipend with the reimbursement. At least we can track something. There are numbers there to track. And, you know, I don't believe in kicking this down the road any further. Uh, we need to do this now. We got this started. We made this mention in January, uh, just so that they could account for this, that this may take place in this budget cycle. I was looking through some meeting minutes from 2018 and this same item was brought up at the meeting in 2018. So we're now seven years later and we're still going over the same thing. So let's make a change and then fix it, you know, next year if we need to, but not keep doing the same thing over and over and over and over and over and over. And again, I just, if we need to pay them more, I don't know that we're getting a good deal for 1.6. Actually, it was 1.9 million last year. I don't know that that's a good deal. I don't know that the municipalities that are getting it, are using it right. Maybe they are. Maybe they're not. But are some of them doing the right thing? Are some of them getting what they need to be? Are some of them being shorted? You know, I think there's a lot of, uh, you know, whoever got the, the most power was pulling in the money that they needed. And so some people were being left out. And this way, we, uh, make it a little more fair for all the people that are getting this money. Because just handing out money without any, uh, oversight at all, the federal government does that or has been, and you can see where they're at. We don't want to be in that same boat. But I, I fully believe in, in, in helping them out at the best we can. And, um, that's, that's where I'm at with it.
Okay. Quickly, I believe in transparency. I would like to see, um, and I ask my municipality to give me the number of children that actually do participate. And I think that's, we should kind of start there and see where we're at. Um, because I am, this is all about children. To me, it's not about the adults. The adults can pay for themselves. With children, I want them, I have four grandkids. They all play sports. I want them to play, be able to play sports and, and not be a financial burden on their parents. So I'm all about doing some type of scholarship or stipend. Um, so it is truly, we are not taking the money away. Because if you're using the money for what you should be using it for, then you're not gonna have any money taken away. Right? Okay, that's it.
All right, I'm gonna put my twist on it. Now, basically, my looking at this, because the, the unincorporated kids are getting charged. My understanding was, is this come about? And, and I, I agree with what Andy said, and, but it come about to make sure that the unincorporated kids didn't get charged more. But I also have a different way of looking at it. And y'all have heard me say before, the municipalities sit inside the county. And all the folks of the unincorporated area are going to the municipalities and doing their business. So all those folks coming in there, it, in a indirect way, is funding the municipalities. Now, I may be looking at it the wrong way, but I think there should be transparency and there should be numbers given so that the county kids don't have to pay more. But I would resent them thinking that us that live in the country are not no more vital to their city than the people that live in the city. Now, I, I do know for a fact that the majority of the kids that are playing in York are country young ones. And, and I'd probably say that's true in Rock Hill and a lot of other folks because I don't see a whole lot now. Over there in y'all's area, that's a total different animal. But that's just my two cents worth because I, I wouldn't, we're, we're going to all their stores and everything else. If they, those stores didn't have the business and all, their revenue would be changed anyway. Now, does, does that make any little bit of sense?
Sure. And building off of that, I, I do think, you know, I was talking to the CVB today. County does support, visit York County. Visit York County, is advertising events all across its county. People are going from unincorporated outside of the county everywhere to the municipalities for those events. Those events are helping those municipalities generate funds that they could potentially use parks. So I, I do think that that, that makes sense. I appreciate y'all all sharing.
They pay the lion's share of it. I mean, they pay the li, the county pays the lion's share of the CVB.
That's right.
So I, I, I do think that the county does a, a lot to support that. I want to continue doing that. I appreciate what the committee has done. I've heard, for purposes of, of what I've heard tonight, I do think that it's important for us to have a consensus. I'm hearing that the majority of council supports the one and a half countywide. That's what is supported. That amount has a cushion in it to continue to provide funding to the municipalities as well. And, and so I think for purposes of a starting point, that, that that's where, we have to, but eliminating the old, that was only dedicated to the unincorporated folks, that has to be done in order to, to set this one aside. Unless there's a majority that wants to keep both, and if there is, then y'all need to speak up now.
Madam Chair, can I share one thing, please?
Sure.
Take a minute. Would this council agree or disagree that the needs of the unincorporated men, women, and children are the same as the needs of the incorporated? Probably? For recreation? Yeah? I mean, same people. So luckily, in our county, 300,000 residents, you got 150 on each side, 150,000 unincorporated, 150,000 incorporated. So if we agree that the needs are the same, and I don't, I hadn't asked this question yet, but cumulatively, the budgets for those five municipalities might be 15 million. but cumulatively the budgets for those five municipalities might be fifteen million dollars. That they're investing in parks and rec, active parks and recreation. I understand the whole conversation about where we spend our money. I, yeah, one day that'll be us. And unincorporated is going to have hotels and restaurants. We'll be generating H tax and A tax too. But if we're assuming the needs are the same and the municipalities are investing fifteen million dollars, twenty million, whatever the number is, ten million, and we're investing one point two, I don't think we need to hire a forensic accountant to figure that out. That's a heck of a deal. Same hundred and fifty thousand over here, a hundred and fifty thousand over here. Needs are pretty much the same and we're investing one point two versus five million, ten million, fifteen, twenty million. Be careful what you ask for.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree.
Yeah, but we still also got to understand now, not all these young, I mean, it's just like, we know we're on the ag side. Not all these kids are showing cows hocks and chickens. And not all these kids are playing sports. And then the municipality, when, when most of us all in here grew up, we had the option of playing mainly two things, either in the churchyard or in school. And then later on, Little League and all come, I played Pop Warner football, all that. But it, not, not everybody's using it. But where you throw the twist in it, to me, as far as for the municipalities, with the travel ball and all this other stuff, that they are reaping more money in. So they can't say that it ain't become a money-making opportunity for them also. So, I mean, that's just...
I think, I think the only, the only thing, and I, we can debate, we can debate the nuances in when the budget is presented to council. I think the question for purposes of today is solely, what is it that, what is the consensus of council in terms of budgeting for coming to first reading? And, and I don't, I always hate it because I feel like I'm the bad guy who has to say it this way. I support one and a half mill countywide. I think that it also accomplishes us being able to address the municipalities this year because the, the, the needs aren't met yet. I support a one and a half mill countywide. I don't think that it makes sense to continue doing an unincorporated and a countywide for a lot of reasons. I'm one vote. I think we do need to give the manager at least the benefit of... Who in here supports the one and a half mill countywide? Who in here supports also doing an unincorporated?
Now, say that, I didn't hear.
Supports a one and a half mill countywide was the first question. The second question is, do you also support keeping the one and a half mill unincorporated? All right, we got, we got that and I'm sure we'll keep...
Just one, real quick, I, I'm sorry, just real quick because I do believe it affects your budget. We need to know, I believe, at least some type of set aside. He needs to know how much of the one point five to allocate for the municipalities.
I think what we can do is we'll work based on the feedback y'all gave tonight. We'll work on that piece. We can present what we think we heard and then y'all can fine tune that through the budget process. I think, I think we're able to, to work on that throughout, but I, but I do think...
For purposes, I mean, if you want to hear from each council member, for purposes of this year, I, I don't think that doing a last minute funding, pull the rug out from under them is, is helpful. But I do think we, we've got to figure out the numbers going forward. So, uh, to me, that number would, would allow us to accomplish that, barring some findings that, that necessitate a change sooner.
So without, by us just doing this one point five, and again, I, I a hundred percent agree, we should not pull the rug out. But by us not doing the other one point five in the unincorporated, we're basically, to me, we're basically cutting off the municipalities here. Because we need that one point five for our parks, right? I thought the goal, this other one point five was going to be helping our parks.
So, so the way the, the committee broke it down, there was a portion of that that they want dedicated to the municipalities, whether that be through a stipend or a capital program. So that's what we've been talking about tonight. It sounds like many of y'all are interested in that stipend program being a part of, of the funding. I think it's important to remember though, we are adding one point five mills to the general fund millage rate. So, uh, that, that's really the feedback we needed to hear tonight, that y'all were on board with that. Make sure we can fund our current parks, our operating our capital into the future. So the more we provide to the municipalities, the less we're able to set aside into a capital project fund that allows us to build future parks. And I think that's the balance, is there's a vision for what y'all want to do with parks? And without money, cannot accomplish that vision, so.
I think we have another question on the table then. The one point five countywide, I don't know if everybody was under the impression that it was money for our parks? And what, those of you that force your opinion that you don't want the one point five and then unincorporated to stay, you're going to be funding that out of the one point five countywide.
That's what the committee shared the other night. That was what the committee asked us to do.
I didn't, I didn't realize that. I didn't, that's not what I voted for in committee.
No, I, that was not the interpretation I had.
Countywide tax.
I'd ask the chair of the committee to share, but that was what the motion said on the, on the report that we provided last night.
I apologize, I missed it, but that's not how I interpreted it. But anyway, I think we need to clarify that because we all raised our hand, maybe not understanding that one million, one point five, two million is going to come out of this to go back to the municipalities in some form or fashion, in a capital or either in a reimbursement.
And I think what's important is, what we're trying to do is, is not for this to be replacement forever. I think what we're trying to do is give a runway for municipalities. Some of y'all want it to be forever, but what we're trying to design is something that's sustainable for the county park system into the future, uh, as, as we continue to grow. Uh, our ability to help the municipalities is a good thing when we can. And so if y'all want us to continue a, a portion of that next year and maybe the year after, then I think that's something we consider. But in, into the future, in, in ten years, if we're doing the exact same thing, then I don't think we've transitioned to the model that we think is best for this county. Most counties are not in this business, uh, and they're in, in more of a passive metro park style business. And the municipalities are doing the more active recreation. And, and most times that means a different fee for folks that are not in municipalities. Uh, so we're trying to transition. I think we've heard everybody's opinion and I think there's a consensus. But what's left is for us to design what that looks like for the municipalities.
I want to remind everybody that a couple of years ago, we asked, we cut the CVB's budget and told them that this new formula would work. Had some naysayers who didn't believe it. Now, the CVB is thriving more because of the changes we made. And if it wouldn't have worked, we still had the liberty to go back and make some corrections. This may not work. This may not turn out to be what we think it will be. But we have the opportunity to go back and fix it if it doesn't. But I don't think what we have right now is the best that we can do. So I just wanted to remind everybody that we made that change.
Well, go ahead, Tom.
Well, I'll let you.
No, again, this discussion, again, my interpretation of it was a one point five for our parks and, and a one point five for the municipalities. That's my interpretation. I give it... By removing that one point five, we basically have just stated to the kids in the unincorporated area, you're going to be paying more, you're going to be paying more to go to these municipalities. Because again, thus, nothing has changed. If we were building ball fields and taking over the, that kind of program, then there's an argument. Outside of that, there's not. I mean, we're telling those kids, your rates are going to go up.
So, and I think we're going back around again, uh, so I, I do want to make sure we move on to, to Mitch's portion. I think we've heard from y'all kind of where you're at. Uh, I think there's obviously more discussion to be had, uh, but I think it's clear where y'all want us to go in the, in the recommended budget at this point. And the conversation really is, what portion of that do y'all want us to work on a stipend or a scholarship or reimbursement based on registry, registry? So, I, I think I've heard that from, from y'all. Uh, anything else, Madam Chair?
I, I'll say, I'm, I'm sitting here trying to listen to council and, and listen to the, to the consensus and, and include the conversations that have happened outside of that. I don't think that, that doing a, I think that this is going to be something that the full council supports. We're waiting for you to do some more due diligence on the, the pieces that we've asked you for. But I think you're hearing council say, I guess I'm going to take a, take a little bit of a difference of opinion from Mr. Aldette. I don't think that that, that council is saying we're cutting anybody out or cutting anybody at the knees. I think what we're trying to do is to create a system that provides a little bit more accountability and that also takes into account that the unincorporated folks are providing recreation as well to offset some of the, the, what the municipalities are having to do. And I, and I don't think that it's going to be, um, a drastic, I think that, I think that we're working through it. I, I just wouldn't support both of them. And so, and I don't hear the rest of the council. I hear the majority of council saying, let's work with a one and a half mill and let's figure out how, how we take that forward.
I'd say it would make it easier for us if we knew how the five municipalities are going to react to what's, you know, the decision that we make. And then that may help us understand what the impact of our decision is.
Well, I think it's, so, so what I would say about that, and I, I think this is a theme that we've talked about in terms of the strategic plan. It's important for the county to develop, develop our vision and for y'all to share your vision. In this case, that's related to parks. You're about ready to do that related to economic development, which also supports the whole county. And so when you share your vision, what we're going to do is we're going to say, how do we fund that vision? And I think that's where we want to start. And then at that point, we can begin to engage with municipalities. But what's happened historically is the municipalities are providing their services and then we're paying into those services. But to Councilmember Roddy's point, uh, the county has not been able to speak into the parks that they're building and where they're building them and what, what programs they're offering there. So that's where we need to better partner on both sides. I think our ability to find our vision and what we're able to do and try to meet in the middle is what's best for York County. And I think that's what we're trying to accomplish this year after a few years of trying, uh, as Councilmember Lynn shared.
All due respect though, we haven't been in a collaborative position to even have that. We haven't been in those conversations until, honestly, until you came to the county, which I'm very, um, encouraged by what we're doing, trying to collaborate with each division of the municipalities. So that's why I'm a little sensitive that just as we're coming out of the gate, trying to actively manage the needs of the county, we're making a decision like this, that's, could be a little adverse, an adverse reaction from one or two or all of the municipalities.
Honestly, I feel our council is, is, is largely on the same page and I think we're kind of...
Majority is.
We need to, we need to, we need to allow, allow you guys to do a little bit more work, build into the budget something that's across the board and help, help make, you're hearing the concerns from everybody. How, how do we make sure that we accomplish the goal, which is to make sure that our, our recreation is funded fairly, with, with, with accountability and also that, that makes sure that we're recognizing the, the contributions that our municipalities make, which are, which are a lot. So I, I think if we've got, we've got, we still have another issue on the agenda and we're at seven thirty.
Well, yeah, but I want to say one thing.
Sure.
If everybody in this country can pay their taxes and register their vehicle and all, why can't this thing just be simplified? All of them have sign up day and sign up sheets. And they write their name, their address and everything else. And right there should be, this kid lives in the country, outside of the city. And get an actual number of who's playing and who, I mean, to me, that would look like, that would be simplest.
I think that's what management, management's working on.
And like I said, as far as what they're building, we ain't got no control over that. And, and I still go back to, they can't say that we're not funding or helping their municipality out because all of us go to the cities to do our bidding. So, I mean, it, it don't make common sense to me, but...
I, I appreciate y'all having that conversation tonight. That has helped us. Those are the remaining items that are hanging out there as we finalize our, our recommended budget, which we'll talk about in, in two short weeks, uh, as I present that. Uh, with that, I wanted to introduce Mitch Miller, our Economic Development Director, uh, for the next part of the program. I appreciate y'all sharing for your feedbacks tonight.
Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I promise this is going to be a fun conversation. I, I will ask for your inputs and I will do my best to stay at the podium because I like to walk and talk. So if I move over, um, please forgive me. So to dive in and quickly get into conversation, just for the interest of time, I kind of want to talk about the outline, what we're going to talk about here tonight. Really looking at a timeline of economic development from past, present and future, what the data says about our community. Appreciate each of you filling out the survey that I sent out. We'll go over the results of that. And then I'm going to be quiet and really kind of ask questions to each of you all as we talk about key corridors within our community, target economic development sectors and initiatives, and end with the economic development fund. I do think your input is valuable and really going to be helpful for us in the economic development committee as we chart a course forward and think about priorities for economic development within York County. So, I'll start back a little bit on the historical side. You know, I'm not from York County, so this is actually helpful for me. But I think this kind of tells a story and in ten years, York County is going to be celebrating its 250th birthday. And I think about the history that comes with that and where we were to where we are today. So dating back to seventeen eighty-five, when York County was incorporated, predominantly a focus on agriculture and really looking specifically at, um, and Tommy probably could speak to this more because I'm sure he's got the historical knowledge, but rice, indigo and cotton were the main crops. That was the main economic driver for growth here in York County. I think it's important to remember your history and think about how that plays into the future as well. The key part was in eighteen fifty-two when the Charlotte and South Railroad, uh, opened up and really created that true connection into Charlotte. That's infrastructure. That's the importance of infrastructure. And really opening up economic opportunities to get goods out the door and sold to other parts of, in the area, in the region. A big shift really started to take place though in eighteen eighty to nineteen fifty. The textile industry, which we're all familiar with, really helped drive future growth. And specifically, that's where you started to see Rock Hill and Fort Mill really take shape, start to grow. And then leading into the late twentieth century and kind of where we are today in modern York County, very diverse, as Charlotte has grown, we've obviously experienced a lot of that growth as well. And we look at economic sectors tied to finance, technology, and we talked a little bit about tourism too. Some of that really is what dri, is driving the economic development efforts and, and really job growth here in York County as we stand today. So I'll talk about how we're going to be turning two hundred and fifty years old here in the next ten years. And what I think is really important is, as you look back to the history and you think about where we want to be, this is where I'm going to ask you all questions tonight. I think the intentionality of the things that we do, why we do it and what we expect the outcome to be is going to be really important. Because we do have the ability to shape the future of what happens here in this community. So, taking a look at where we are today. When I talk about projects with y'all, we talk about jobs a lot. And I think the important thing is to really get an understanding when we look at our workforce as a whole, how do we really paint the picture of this is York County? And so I, I took a look and, and Jose in our department is great with numbers. And really, we broke down looking at the different sectors. Took general manufacturing, that's where, predominantly, that's where a majority of our jobs are focused on, at twelve point seven percent. Healthcare, social assistance at eleven point one percent, retail trade at eleven point one, and then finance and insurance at eight point four. So obviously, we know what manufacturing is. We can point to a couple. Healthcare, social assistance, same as well. The retail side, that's where we're talking about the targets, the Walmarts of the world, the service-based industries. And lastly, the finance, insurance, probably where we're talking about the bigger industries like an LPL. And so that's really the breakdown. And then when you really look at the wages provided with that, um, manufacturing really encompassed in all of manufacturing, that's everything from engineering to corporate level piece that if you have a plant manager all the way down to the low level, uh, type position as well. You really wanted to get kind of an average of what does an assembly worker make? You're probably going to look at that forty to fifty thousand dollar a year range. But I do want to say that's skewed a little high because it incorporates different parts of manufacturing. The healthcare side, um, I was a little surprised. I expected that to be higher. That also factors in social work programs, things like that. It's talked about retail as well. And then on the finance side, again, proximity to Charlotte has driven a lot of that growth. And as some of those businesses come into York County, those wages are going to be predominantly pretty high. And then at the bottom there, that's really a breakdown as we look at the educational attainment here within our community. Again, the majority of our population base has a high school diploma. And, and I say all that to say, as we think about wanting to get to a higher income level, we need to be thinking about workforce programs, initiatives that are going to help drive more skillset and help some of our citizens really achieve that opportunity through education. So I'll dive into the council survey results here real quick. Overall, each of you thought we had a pretty favorable business climate. There was only one vote for non-favorable. And then really looking at the strengths, I'll touch on a few here. Location, international airport, interstate seventy-seven, the quality of life, all the... all the things that kind of follow the quality of life, like trails, rivers, outdoor. And, and again, proximity to Charlotte. Those are all really big strengths that we can rely on as we look to sell this community and think about future opportunities. I talked about, asked the question about significant economic development challenges facing York County. I think this is a big one that, you know, we'll dive into as we look at corridor planning and vision planning tonight. Infrastructure and development is one. As we've seen tremendous growth here, it's put a strain on our infrastructure. And so we have to be really smart and forward-thinking about keeping up with that growth if we're going to continue to grow. A big part of that too is understanding who are we aiming to be. I would say that we probably don't, from an economic development standpoint, have a true growth identity about who we want to become in the next 10 years. But I think we can get there. And I'm really excited to work with the ED committee to think through that and council as a whole to think through that. That leads into lack of a development strategy. Councilwoman Chairman Cox, I think I've heard you talk about that numerous times, probably in every meeting, about the need for a strategy. And so I think that's got to be a priority that we place as we talk about who we want to become. There has to be community engagement and planning as part of that. And I know I skipped to the end, but I think they work hand in hand. And that's going to help us as we talk about the workforce of the future and preparing our citizens for growth. And lastly, I think about you, Councilman Audette. Red tape, barriers, some of the issues affecting small business. What can we do to make sure we're not creating that red tape and we can cut through it? Looking in at critical economic development priorities. Again, supporting business really ranked extremely high. Making sure we find the right types of jobs, do the right types of developments and investments. Being really strategic, coming back into, to the need of really having kind of a plan and a focus. And then looking at strategies, I asked each of, each of you to really rank strategies and provide some feedback. Tax incentives actually ranked last, and that's probably one of the biggest tools that we use currently as we look to encourage job growth here into the community. And so with that, what are some other things that we could be doing? Workforce training and marketing, probably ranked the highest because we need to focus more on there to make sure, one, our citizens are ready to get these jobs that we're going after. But two, we're actually talking to the right people that we want in this community and having a dedicated marketing plan to go attract that type of investment. Other ranked the highest, I wanted to give you all the ability to kind of speak into that. Some of those, some of those, I guess, factors that you wanted to be included is, again, making it easier to do business. I think some of that ties into small business and again, developing a shared vision. And then lastly, kind of going in and I'll, this is where I'll be quiet after this slide. Types of industries we want to focus on, it was all across the board. I definitely think we need to focus in a little tighter and the ED committee can do that. But I do think your opinions matter. And so really honing in to say, if we're going to support manufacturing, what does that mean? And what type of manufacturing do we really want to go after? We talked about, and I'll read some of the comments here that I couldn't fit on the screen. Supporting blue collar workers and leveraging our available workforce, potential partnerships with automobile manufacturers and reshoring efforts. Getting into the healthcare life science, really looking at high-paying jobs and growth opportunities there. From agriculture and food production, protecting our local resources and supporting our regional economy. Hospitality and tourism enhancing economic growth and quality of life. Corporate headquarters leveraging our location and proximity to Charlotte. IT financial services, again, alignment and proximity to Charlotte puts us in a very important position and plan off of that. Warehouse distribution, only to pursue high-level investments of 250 million or over and being really focused on not having an over reliance on this sector. And then transportation, just to support movement of goods to create economic connectivity with other communities like Columbia and Charlotte. And then lastly, again, the chart here, looking at prioritized allocating dollars for economic, out of the Economic Development Fund. I put some examples and got feedback from you all on that. Quality of life ranked last, whereas other ranked the highest. But outside of other, return on investment was a reoccurring theme that we saw with, with some of the comments that you all put in there as well. Other included land development, small business programs, leveraging funds to attract higher wage jobs and investing in the. As we get to the ED fund, obviously, small business programs and land development really were a key part of the motion that the ED committee made as well. So with that being said, I'm going to be quiet and I'm going to push to y'all. I took a look at really four areas in York County and I would love to get your feedback because when we think about growth, York County is very diverse and different from the east side all the way to the west side. And we need to be really intentional about what we see in different sectors. So I want to go over those different sectors. I really broke I-77 down into two different corridors. I-77 North, that's everything kind of north of downtown Rock Hill. I-77 South Corridor is south of Rock Hill. And then headed west after that, we'll get into the next two maps. But Debbie, Tom, I'm curious, because a lot of this is your district here, as we look at the north portion of Fort Mill. I'm curious of what you see as strategy maybe tied to car winds and what you would love to see around that area? Or the South Bridge development that connects into Kingsley on the back end and close to the Greenway? Curious to get your opinions on how you see growth happening there and what's really a priority for you.
Yeah. Is that an open-ended question right now?
It's a very open-ended question and I'm going to take notes.
Okay. Deb, you want to go first?
No.
Let me think about that for a second. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and repeat that question.
My name is hurting. Say that again, Mitch. Tell it to me again.
But you all represent individuals in that district and you live there. And there's some key components that really make that area of the county special, like car winds, like Kingsley, Baxter Village. There's not a lot of land really that we can look at to develop in and around Fort Mill anymore. I like it used.
Well.
And so I think being smart and strategic, how do you really look at a vision for those parts of the community? And what would you love to see?
When I ran for office, one of the things, one of the key things that I looked at is the fact that I have Ann Springs, Greenway. And there was a study done about Central Park that the, the people who live around Central Park in New York, the, the housing is just like off the charts. So if you live close to a park like that and like, kind of going off what Christie said, the how, your value of your land increases. And so we've had the opportunity, even in Regent Park, to have a, a development, a park development to come up. And it was funny that I had, in the community, a lot of people were like, oh, gosh, what's this going to be? This is going to be terrible, you know? I said, look, you just won the lottery because your, your land, your house has increased in value by being next to this park. So we have, even though our parks are passive, we still have the opportunity that people who live around parks will have a better lifestyle because they'll have the opportunity to just walk and have, that's why I think preservation is so important. You don't have to develop every single square inch of your area. And, and like with Ag, with Tommy, you know, I just love that part of the county. And I mean, I drive along, I go, wow, I want to live over here. But anyway, so that, I just think that that area, the Close Family has just been a tremendous asset for my community. Tom, you want to?
Yeah, so I had to take a minute to think about this. So I think multi-county parks, I think that we look at what's currently in a multi-county park and what can we put in a multi-county park? Because I think there's some opportunity there. I think that we can also look at how we look at mul, or mixed use, right? So we look at Kingsley, for example. The opportunity of Kingsley to bring in the needed, what we call, you know, needed services based on where the people are. You know, you figure the amount of traffic we get on these roads there, there's a, there's a value statement of what the services that are needed can apply to the traffic, the amount of traffic flowing through there, right? And the last thing too, I just, you know, the small business program that we're about to kick off here with the toolkit and stuff, I think that we have an opportunity to really establish York County as a, as a leader in small business initiatives, all right? And I think that if we put this together in a way that excites the public, which I, what we have is going to, I'd say, do very well and I think we'll add into it as we go. I think we have an opportunity to change the mindset of York County and, and kind of eliminate the stigma of Act 388 and really look at this as a business community. The last thing is sidewalks and paths. When you're in a tight-knit community, again, there's not a lot of open land, obviously, where we are. So we need to connect people. We need to make sure they're connected by parks, by trails or bike paths. That will actually give more people an opportunity to partake in services that are in the area that don't feel like driving, so.
And we've got car winds.
And we have car winds too. So yeah, that's, yeah, and, right.
And we hope that, we hope that that area gets some special attention. Manag, management. We hope that the car winds area gets some special attention because it's very important to the whole county.
Say it again, Debbie. I don't think Josh heard it. Say it one more time.
Yeah. She's saying, make the gateway beautiful. That's what she's saying.
Yeah.
Make it.
Make it beautiful and they will come.
Oh, they will come.
More, we'll have more come.
Don't even put a sign up there in the fastest case.
Right. Yeah.
We hear you and Mitch is taking good notes, I promise.
Mitch, I think lastly, you know, when it comes to businesses, I think we need to have a very strong relationship with Six Flags as we build out that, help build out that area. And I know we changed zoning in a lot of those lots. So I think there's an opportunity and a lot of synergy to attract many different unique businesses.
Good point. Thank you for sharing y'all's opinion.
Yeah.
Want to head a little south, Councilman Huckabee, kind of get into your neck of the woods. Specifically, I know because you've mentioned it, talk about the Catawba River and why that's an important asset and what you'd love to see.
All right, I'll start with that. I believe that we have some natural assets in York County. The Catawba River is one of those natural assets. And I'd say at this point, we haven't been as intentional as we could have been with developing the Catawba River. The development takes place around the Catawba River. It's, I mean, how many counties have two rivers that border the counties? We have, we have the Broad River on the, on the west side and we have the Catawba River running through, through Rock Hill. It's very unique. So I think we, I think it would behoove us to not only begin to plan more intentionally about what we're developing on the Catawba River, but we begin planning for the future, which could, you know, once we get water and sewer out, Highway 5 at some point in time in the future, that area will begin to grow. What are we, what are we going to intentionally do on the Broad River? And we have time to plan that along the same lines. I think this council has an opportunity to be intentional as we talk about preserving green space and, and actually putting a plan together. Farming has reduced in York County, South Carolina and the United States. So what are we doing differently to actually bring farming back, encourage agriculture here? I think there are things that we have to do. So I believe that the unincorporated areas of the county, we need to be intentionally to plan town centers, main street areas. Lake Wiley is a good example in 274. What are we doing to create a town center in Lake Wiley? What's been done on the west side of Fort Mill to create a town center for all the growth that's taking place out there? Because what you want is ultimately, from what I'm, and I'm, it's interesting since I'm a joint county council and Nikki and I do travel a fair amount. I open my eyes and I pay attention to what the other areas are doing. You don't have to look far to see what's working. But it appears with the development that takes place today, it's development that allows you to park your car and walk. Maybe park it at your house and get in your golf cart and roam around your neighborhood where your schools are and your, your restaurants are, your grocery store is. You never get out on the main road if you want to avoid it. So I think we have an opportunity to be intentional about creating these town centers or these main streets in certain areas of the county. And I think we have the same opportunity to do, when you look at this map and the map of York County, to intentionally develop industrial parks that meet the needs of employers and employees today. What, what they're looking for today, not what, not what we were looking for previously, years past. And I think if we take advantage of that, it's just another reason why people may stay and work in York County versus driving to Charlotte and wasting two or more hours of their day going to and fro. So I think, I think we're in a unique situation. You know, there's not a lot we can do with how Rock Hill's developed or how Highway 49's developed or Fort Mill's developed. But we do have an opinion on what the unincorporated area of York County looks like in five, 10, 20 years. If we're intentional.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Coming a little closer into Rock Hill, Councilman Roddy. I know, Tori, that's your district. How do you see collaboration there and what can we be doing from the county side as far as economic development goes?
Well, considering Rock Hill holds all the cars and all the keys to the big trucks, you know, getting them on board would be a plus, but we don't have to always incorporate them. We can be intentional of what we're doing outside the city limits. Obviously, the south side of Rock Hill, we're wide open. We need to hang a big banner and say, we're open for business because there are a lot of things that, that we can use and need that Rock Hill's not interested in putting them there. Obviously, and I said this several years ago, we've developed so far north, we've run into the river. When is it going to come swing back to, towards the south side of Rock Hill? Because we have plenty of land. We have, the housing developments are hit. We don't have the medical facilities. We don't have the grocery stores. We don't have the dry cleaners. We don't have the, the leisure parks. And I've hinted to, you know, trying to get a park in this district. So we're the next big thing to hit in Rock, in Rock Hill or the south side of Rock Hill. It's, it's wide open. We've got plenty of land to do what we want to do. It's just having that driver or that anchor that things starts to come up around it. Couple of years ago, Rock Hill announced it, we got this big three points development going in on Huckle and on the south side of Rock Hill. Well, what happened there, that was a big sham. That was supposed to have been a big driver for the area. Had this big block party saying, hey, we're going to kick off the big south side. Never happened. So we, we got a, I guess, council, county council can, can get involved and designate or purchase some land and build something on the south side that other developments can come around. But is that what county government does? Do we go in and buy land and build what Watts wants to talk about, a town center? How do we, how do we, how do we do that? Or is that what county government is supposed to be doing? Don't really know. I don't, haven't seen it done by any other county. But doesn't mean that we can't do it. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't do it. It's just how do we get there to, to, to spark that in an area like the south side of Rock Hill? I don't know.
Flip to the south, I-77 South Corridor. I think it's a great point. There's got to be collaboration, obviously, because Rock Hill's a municipality servicing that area.
Yeah, when you control the water, the sewer, utilities, you know, we don't control any of that. So we can't really drive that bus or that boat when you don't control any of the infrastructures. But we, we got to, if we had our own water, we had our own sewer, our own electric, we can go out and do it tomorrow. But we don't control any of that. So we have to incorporate Rock Hill into anything that we're going to do outside the city limits.
I'll touch on it when we get to ED fund. Public-private partnerships were a big, big topic of conversation in the city. There could be some things that we could do there in partnership with Rock Hill and private development and try to incorporate some of the things that we see as value and importance of the community. I think from my perspective, and I would say this to any district, it's probably a good thing as we talk about community engagement, getting out within those communities and understanding who are some of those key leaders and what it is that they envision for that area to be. Keep with Tom here, headed a little bit further south into more of the unincorporated area. Councilwoman Chairman Cox, curious to get your opinion as we talk about Porter Road down into Chester County, headed that way.
So, so as someone who's born and raised here in York County and who, who's lived on the south side, this is extremely important to me. And, and, and I'll say this. I think as council members, and, and you know, I've been very proud to serve with council. There have been folks that have invested in other areas of the county that didn't have to. And I am, I'm so proud of the things that. And I am, I'm so proud of the things that we do because we look countywide. And, and I do think that we support, despite, you know, the criticisms of, of the parks, we have historically been a very strong partner with all of the municipalities in the community. Uh, we've supported the TISs in the downtown. We, we pushed to, to make them more accountable. But as someone who's now putting on the hat of, of, I, I do represent the south, the south side of, of York County and Rock Hill. And it hurts, it, it hurts, it physically hurts me when I hear there's nothing we can do about this area because the city of Rock Hill holds all the keys. I refuse to accept that, and I think as a council, none of us should do that. I think every single inch of our county, we need to maximize the benefit. We are so blessed. We aren't in a hurry. We don't have to rush to do anything. And, you know, our unemployment rates are, are great and we have investment and we have land. And what concerns me is that I'm seeing a lot of investment, for instance, the city of Rock Hill purchasing forty, forty-five million dollar investment in the Palmetto exit, the former Panther exit. And I know that they've been real intentional about what it is that they want there and what they don't want there. And, and what happens is the stuff that, that they don't want gets pushed further down, and I don't think we need to do that. I think we've got to come to the table. We have got to figure out ways to partner. We have got to get, um, uh, some discussion going on with the, the property owners in the area to make sure that, that what, the entranceway into the county from the south side is just as important as the entranceway to the county from the north side. And I'm going to support the whole county for us to do that. I'm asking for y'all's support to do that. I do feel like that, that, you know, it's, last night, we, we, we passed, the council passed, thirty thousand dollar impact fee for a home. When I look at the city of Rock Hill's numbers, they're saying that the average median income is sixty-four thousand dollars. That, that's basically, if you did the interest rate on that thirty thousand dollars, that's the median income. We have to be honest and open about what are the challenges in each area of the county. And, and I'm, I feel very strongly and I, I'm feel very passionately that we need to look at each area. What is those, what do those areas need? How do we partner with our schools? How do we partner with our areas to make sure that we maximize what, what little bit of land we have left? And I'm hoping that council will come around to that. I, I think when you ask, what, what do, what do the folks on the south side want? They want the same thing that everybody else wants. They don't want to be told, "Well, you have too much rock down here, so we can't do anything good. We're just going to dump all the warehouse and distribution from Charlotte down here, and that's all that we're going to invest in." I, I think that we're better than that, and I think that we should expect better than that. And I think that if we plan and if we put some funding into looking at incorporating a south side entity and let's, let's get folks together at the table, that we can try to do things that what everybody wants, which is, let's raise, let's, let's raise all the boats. Let's figure out ways that we attract industry where folks can actually work where they live. And, and, and I do think that we need to look at, at investment. We've done that throughout the county. When you look at QTS, that, that was no accident. There was an investment there. When you look at some of the parks that were done to the north of us and, and over in Waterford, there was investment there. When you look at the east, East York Industrial Park, there was investment there. And so, I just, um, I'm hoping that, that we will, we will look to, to attract higher quality headquarters, office that we not sell ourselves short there, or just say we can't do anything because the reality is that, that exit to the north of us took a lot of investment to make it better. And, and that's what it's going to take here. And, and I, I think that the community there needs that. I also think one of the things, these are simple things. I think that we need to look at doing multi-county industrial parks to provide food. So, to, to attract food service areas. My understanding is there's a parcel right there at the south side that Walmart owns. We need to really tackle that head-on and figure out, how do we designate an area and be creative about using incentives to attract a grocery store because there isn't one there. We used to have, we used to have two.
The Windex.
We used to have two. And we used to have Balo. I worked at it. We used to have, well, A and P is now what? Dollar General now or Family Dollar? Um, what'd you say?
Windex was right down there.
Right. And, and we don't have that. And I just think this is a, this is a little bit harder. And it's tough, but I think if we roll up our sleeves and we tackle it, that we can do good there just as well as we can everywhere else. And I am committed to helping every place in our county get the highest and best use of what we can get.
Thank you for sharing. All right, I want to head a little west. I hear Dalton, here's always say, "All roads lead to York," and I kind of see that now that I've been looking at this map. So, looking at Lake Wiley, Clover, York, and specifically kind of the western portion of Rock Hill headed into York. Really try to break this down by highways and then really looking into the municipalities or, or at least the growth areas. So, Highway one sixty-one seems to be a pretty hot topic of growth. I know I drove it coming down here. There's a lot going on. Everything seems to be pushing this way. So, I, I'm curious really to get the take, maybe from Airport West, how you envision that corridor and what that looks like. Obviously, that's leading into York. Councilman Atkins, I'll, I'll maybe throw that one to you and get your thoughts there.
You sure you won't mind?
Hey, I'm asking for everybody.
Well, we need good manufacturing businesses, but at the same time, most of the people in my area and all, we still want to not rub elbows, I guess you could say. Because I think we're going, it's one of those some things. I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say, I'm, I get tired of people telling me that we can't stop progress, but I guess it depends on what you deem and you determine as progress. My view of progress, more people and a lot of cars ain't necessarily it. I mean, you just heard Tom and Debbie talk about there ain't much land left there and how valuable there is to have a park. Most of my people, we didn't, we didn't walk out the back door and go in woods and, and still see squirrel and everything, you know. We, we ain't got to. It, it's a long-going joke over on the western side, you know, as long as we got one grocery store, parts house, and a gas station, we're pretty happy. And that's why most people over here, but being that so, you ain't never had a poor man give nobody a job neither. I think on, on this side, because most of you know, and even Kevin does, that I'm opposed to, to the ideas on countywide water and sewer because when that happens, it's going to destroy this side. The only reason all that grows over there is a hundred percent right because of the water and, and the sewer. And even Rock Hill and them can't figure out that that mud hole out there is going to go dry. It almost happened about twenty years ago, and we'd do for another bad drought. But, um, good manufacturing businesses, I, I would just love to have the York that we had in the eighties back because we had a little bit of everything we needed.
Specifically, like downtown?
We have good businesses, have jam-up good places to eat and all, locally owned. And I think I've talked to Tom, I've even said this to Chrissy before, the reason small towns worked was because the businesses and all were made up of the people of the small town. Y'all may love all this franchise stuff. I personally would rather have a homemade hamburger than to sit in any Wendy's or any of this. Everybody's just living a, a fake life. They want the easiest life. But I would rather, well, I mean, it's true that everybody likes good food. I mean, that's why we all went to grandma's house. But, um, I mean.
That's true.
Growth does not mean you got to destroy places. And, and for most of us over here on this side, y'all can welcome all that, but most folks over here don't want it. I mean, it, it, it's just that simple. I mean, back when I was growing up, Selbarn was a part, a very vital part of this community and Cannon Mill. You know, that's where most folks either worked or whatnot. I understand that a certain amount of it's going to come. But, but just like Newport right now and what's happening in Newport, now a lot of it out of our control is because of the city of Rock Hill. But with that other development and whatnot coming, you think it's going to take y'all a while to get from y'all's house now coming down one sixty-one? I mean, we, we done piled all this stuff up on the most major roads that we got. And, and, and now we're wondering why we can't move it off. Y'all want to do traffic studies. I don't have to do a traffic study. I can go out there and stand for about ten minutes and see what the traffic's like. On one hand, we're saying business, business, all this here, and on the other hand, we all saying how bad we hate traffic and how.
And we have no infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's just, it, it don't make good sense. I, over here, though, if I had to talk about what I would like to see economically, I would like to see local people running local businesses. I couldn't care less about all the franchises and stuff. Y'all don't have it over y'all. We need something out of there. We go there and get it. It, it, we're going to end up destroying the whole dag gum county of this thing. I mean, it, I don't know, it just, I have a total different look at it. You know, it's like all the folks that come in here and, and say, "Oh, I love York County. Oh, it's great and everything." And every second that goes by, we're doing everything to change it and destroy it. About best I've been there.
I appreciate your feedback. Thank you. Looking a little north, Councilman Litten, I know, um, I drive through Lake Wiley quite, quite a bit, um, so, and obviously, I kind of broke down Highway forty-nine between two A and two B because one is kind of the future of, you know, what happens with growth like QTS headed into New York. But then you've got to be really looking at the connectivity to Charlotte and kind of two different animals. I'm curious to get your take, and then also looking over into Clover as well.
The main thing that, uh, that I believe that we need, and it, and it applies to the whole county, is, is just having a plan in general and making sure that we stick with that plan, you know. What I would prefer to see are local commercial hubs, industrial hubs. If we could get some, you know, obviously, like everybody else, we want manufacturing over there. If we can keep people staying in the area to work and live and not be traveling all over the place, that would cut down on the amount of infrastructure, roads, travel time, those type of things. But really, it's just having well-planned out. Like you said, Highway forty-nine in this section you referenced is, uh, two B over there is, it's a disaster with, I believe there was a wheel for planning, but it got thrown out the window somehow. And it's just a hodgepodge of whatever. And that's not what I would envision anywhere. I would really like to have walkable town centers like Councilman Huckabee said. Places where you can get out and visit multiple stores and locations without having to get in your car and drive to another parking lot. You know, and just be able to stay in your community for the opportunities. And I'll go on and say, I wouldn't mind having another data center or two.
Okay.
That's how I'm going to fund my bridge. Because if y'all notice on the, uh, like two slides back, if y'all count all the bridges, there ain't hardly any. Sure could use one.
Good point. Yeah, I've spent, I've spent some time sitting on the bridge, waiting to get into South Carolina.
Right. Yeah, because the thing is, I would love to have an interstate on my side to be able to put a, a, you know, commercial hubs along and to be able to just really generate a lot of growth, but we don't have that over there. So, uh, for those that have the, the transportation infrastructure, that have the railroads, that have the interstate, you know, you have to kind of take what you, what you have. And so, we'll take, you know, some good manufacturing over here that people can stay over here since we can't really transport much out.
Last one I'll kind of point to, and Councilman Atkins, I appreciate your feedback. I think you probably have touched on some of this as we think about really west York County and Highway five leading out to eighty-five and then tying in, you know, to the Broad. Any other feedback you want to add to that from what you said as you look at really western York County?
People know how to shoot good, I can tell you that.
All right.
Well, we would like to.
We write that down as a note.
They, I'm just telling you, most people over here, we live over here because we don't want all that. I mean, everybody's got to have a job and all that, and it can be handled and managed. But I mean, if you think these folks are raising cane about these few houses that, well, they ain't few, but that, that York is putting in, I mean, what is so bad about riding by folks that own land and they got a gun? And they got chickens in New York, everything. Well, that is a way people tend and want to live also. You, you ain't got to have all of this. Matter of fact, I mean, you, well, I'll put it to you this way, in my mind, what we've already done, it ain't exactly working because every one of you complained about traffic and all this. I mean, I made a statement last night. We using broke folks' money. I mean, and, and that's about what, I mean, we about done crippled the dollar to the point it ain't going to come back. And, and we need to be very wise because coming up here today, men come and pass some of the most prettiest hayland that you ever did remember. And I have no right to tell a person they can't sell or buy land. I ain't saying that. But it sure looked a lot better with that hay on it than it does now with five hundred houses sitting out there.
But just keep those chickens from out of recycling center.
Yeah, that's right. So, it's all about the chickens, man. But, but don't get me wrong. I'm not saying we don't need jobs. We do need jobs. We need good jobs. But I value seeing local people and local jobs. I, I haven't got to have everybody from Tim Duck to, I mean, it, I could make some statements, but I wouldn't want to do it because it'd probably offend a lot of folks. But there sure is a lot of folks in other parts of our county that require and have to depend on the youngins from the western side because they're still able to do that job because they come up and grew up that way, doing those lines of work. And, and one of them is a very vital part of this county. And I put it to you this way, I got seven youngins and ain't never, none of them ever had a problem getting a job. And from the oldest to the youngest, right man, you wouldn't believe the number of people that hire them. Just for one simple fact.
And, and sorry to interrupt, Councilman Atkins, but I do, we're getting close on time. We want to respect y'all's evenings. And I know some of y'all who were here late last night, so Mitch, if you don't mind kind of moving through and if we need to meet again to finish this, we, what we're really trying to do is get some of this work done quickly, much like the rural zoning project. So, I apologize that it's fell two nights in a row. But, but I really want us to have as much information up front so we can develop a product that y'all all buy into on the backend. But with that, I'll hand it back to Mitch.
So, thank you.
Mitch, can I add one, can I just say one statement?
Yep.
Opportunity zones, Tim Scott's program, he had, I, I think it might be something to look into how he, how he created those.
Good point.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all. I appreciate your feedback. So, thank you all, I appreciate your feedback, talking about your areas you represent and what you value. Currently, how we do economic development, I would say community development is not a part of it. It's not a big part of it, it's a component. But if I were to tell you today, you go to our website, what you see on the left-hand side is our target industry and what we go after. So, essentially, we say, "We're looking for growth, we're looking for jobs, if you fall within these sectors, we think you're a fit." What I think is valuable is getting the perspective of each of you and thinking about, what is the right fit for our community? Maybe it's not a sector, maybe it's really thinking through the why we are going to go do things and then talking about the how. I can give you an example just based off some of the things we talked about, we talked about quality jobs. Maybe the why is, you know what, we wanna attract quality jobs and we really wanna look at increasing our average wage by twenty percent over the next decade. Maybe that's a priority, and if you fall within that.
We can do that with inflation.
Could.
We gotta be better than that, I'm just kidding.
If you wanna say fifty, you can say it. I don't know if it's attainable. But I say that to say, instead of focusing on target industries, what if we focus on target initiatives? And we think through things that are really important to us, and then we go out and find developers, companies, whatever it may be, that really fit the mold of that. And so, I think that's the important side, and something that, you know, the feedback that I got, I heard quality of life and everything y'all talked about, that probably ring the last when we really think about it in terms of what the survey said. Maybe some of the developments incorporate elements that have connectivity with trails, really looking at town centers and maybe how we can intensify opportunities for development that incorporate workforce housing, good-paying jobs, access to recreation. Those are the things that I think in everything that I'm hearing you all say, maybe the ED committee can go back and reevaluate and think like, what is really important to us, why is it important? And then really flesh out a plan of how we're gonna go do it. It's protecting parts of Western York County and the culture and the heritage and the look and the appearance, that needs to be a priority when we consider things in that area. I'd be the first to say, when I applied for a job, I went down here, I went down to stay with my parents in Lincoln, and I got up that morning before my interview, and I started down three twenty-one. First city I hit was Clover, and I headed all the way west, all the way through the county, and ended up in Fort Mill to do my interview. I called my girlfriend and said, "Western York County is beautiful, it was a beautiful day." And I think that's part of the culture and really the appearance that's attractive to this community. We gotta protect that, I'm a hundred percent agree with you there. Lastly, leading into the ED fund, I talk about the why and the how. I think this could be a piece as we, as the ED committee look, really thinking like, how can the fund help determine how we could do some of these things? It is a study to really look at, you know, establishing these corridors or these hubs that we wanna look at for town centers. That could be an option. I probably won't get it right because I felt like we talked about it for twenty minutes. So, Council Chairman Cox, if I get this wrong, please let me know. But the motion that came out of the ED committee was to support public-private partnerships for the purchase of land and infrastructure with the option to control and to focus on small business initiatives. So, if we really look at all that and what we all said, or what you all said, I think a lot of those really have a line of sight right back into that motion. Really, a charge maybe to the ED committee to dive in even deeper and really think about what are the things we truly wanna go after, why we wanna go after, and how we're gonna actually do it. I know in the interest of time, I appreciate your opinions and your insight to how you're really looking at your parts of the community in York County as a whole. Thank you for the opportunity to lead in York County's economic development efforts. And any feedback you all have, whether tonight, after the meeting, or feel free to call me, I'm happy to talk in more detail. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this conversation will continue to move on. I know that it's late night, but do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your turn.
We all agreed on that one.